Are we ready?
I don't see Deb on there.
Caller, regular meeting of Pennington County Commission to order. Appreciate people being here. Just a reminder, the agendas are in the back of the room. We do have speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on any particular subject matter coming before the commission today, please fill out the speaker form. Turn it in on your right side over here to our commission manager, Holly Hennings. Ask that you quiet your cell phones and we'll start out with the moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Review and approve agenda, item 21. We've been asked to pull from the agenda and so I would take a motion to approve the agenda less item 21.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I should point out also that Commissioner Hadcock is in the building. She just happens to be in a different room and is participating in the commission meeting. And Deb, I presume you can hear us okay? Commissioner Hadcock, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Do we have to roll call the vote, Gary?
We will have to. Thank you. So the, we'll go back to approving the agenda. We'll do a roll call on that vote.
Okay. Hadcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll go to the consent calendar. Holly Hennings?
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5th, 2021. Number six is authorization to cancel the list of outstanding checks over one year old and remit funds totaling $5,695.02 to the Office of the State Treasurer. Number seven is to set the 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting dates. Number eight is approval of the Festival Lights Parade application, participant application and participant indemnification, statement of financial responsibility and waiver. Number nine is approval of the fourth quarter L E M P G, which is the Local Emergency Management Planning Grant with the state of South Dakota. Number 10 is approval of the 2022 Local Emergency Performance Grant Subrecipient Agreement. Number 11 is approval of the chair's signature on the personnel action forms submitted by emergency management. Number 12 is approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with SDSU Extension for the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. Number 13 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of September 2021. And finally, number 14 is to declare 10 EF Johnson radios as surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Are there any members of the public wishing to have any of these items from the consent calendar removed for discussion? Seeing none, is there any members of the commission that desire to have any member, any items from the consent calendar removed for discussion? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for approve.
Second. I've got a motion and a second for the discussion. Roll call vote.
Hadcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye. Motion carried.
Regular agenda items. Item 15, application to establish right-of-way to an isolated tract pursuant to S D L C 31-22-1. This is a request from Cross Sabers. We did the site visit on this last Friday, the entire commission did. We are being asked by the applicant to continue this until November 2nd.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion to continue this item until November 2nd for the discussion. I might just point out that in this, in my opinion, in doing this review, this is not necessarily all something that this level of government probably needs to be overly concerned with. I think this more lies with the property owners than it does with the government entity. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate, I'm sorry. Call the roll, please.
Hadcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye. Motion carried.
Items from the auditor. Cindy Muller.
Mr. Chair.
Oh. Are we early? We're too early for that. Let's, we'll move on to item 17. Items from Buildings and Grounds, and I understand that Mike is unavailable today. Jay Alderman, are you able to take this?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity here. Yeah, Mike is not able to be here today and I'm getting to it here. So what you have in front of you is-
And you are?
Well, I'm sorry. Jay Alderman with the state's attorney's office.
Thank you.
What you have is the agreement for the Crisis Stabilization Unit for the state to issue the, or to pay up to the 4.6 million to assist and aid in the construction of that new unit across the street over here. I just want to say thank you again to the sheriff and to Barry from Health and Human Services for their efforts in getting this off the ground and getting the legislature to work with us. This is, I've been here a long time and this has been discussed for over a decade easily and it's finally coming to fruition and it's going to be an improvement in what we can offer and the efficiency in offering it. So it's a big deal. It's about time and so I appreciate everyone's effort in getting this done. The agreement itself, we've worked with the state. We've narrowed it down quite a little and so I think it has the basic provisions in it that we all have agreed to. The state is ready to sign, so I would encourage you to sign it. So we, we already have things that we can invoice.
Mr. Chair.
Towards that 4.6.
Commissioner Ross Connect? Moved to approve the individual beneficiary recipient agreement with the state of South Dakota Crisis Stabilization Center in the amount of $4,600,000.
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any public discussion relative to this? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission. Any questions or comments?
Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Chairman and Jerry, I just wanted to echo and share of the long time coming and the hard work of our community to bring this here. It's like you said, Jay, it's been talked about for 10 years, even longer and the greatness of this is the partnership, not only the state, but we've also got nonprofits, we've got us. We're going to have a multitude of organizations coming together to make this work. And I think the reason, one of the reasons why we were chosen is if you look at the campus and what we've done there with partnering with city and nonprofits and so forth, the state's seen what amazing jobs this community, Rapid City could be, can do and know we can support this and do it right.
And you're absolutely right. I missed that point that we have others that have stepped up and filled in the gap in financing, which is an amazing testament to those folks in our community. So thanks for reminding me of that.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Although this facility is going to be located in downtown Rapid City, it's going to benefit the entire western South Dakota and every county in western South Dakota. And you know, it's hard for me. I'd still like to call it Western South Dakota Crisis Stabilization Center, but it is what it is. But I just want folks to know that this is going to help a lot of people in western South Dakota to keep them from sending their families to eastern South Dakota to fix the problem.
Absolutely. It is a true partnership between various levels of government and private sector, nonprofits, and so the partnership is making this happen. So we appreciate the commitment by the state of South Dakota on this also. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, call the roll.
Hadcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you, Jay. Items from Highway Department, item 18.
Mr. Chair. Can I interrupt for two seconds?
Yeah.
I just wanted to let the board know that the statute that required us to conduct a roll call when any member is participating by teleconference changed in this year's legislative session. You no longer have to do a roll call vote, but you may. So that's the decision of this board. The only requirement is if anyone votes in the negative, then a roll call has to be done.
Okay.
But at this point, you don't have to if you don't wish, but you can continue.
Unless there's objection by the commission, we'll continue this meeting with doing, without the roll call. As requested.
I'm good with it.
Deb, are you good with that?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Thank you. Sean?
Sean Smith, Highway Department. Morning, Commissioner. What you have before you is agreement for engineering services with K L J to put together engineering plans for four bridges that we intend to apply for with the big program. We found out last year in going through the process that our in-house plans and process was not, did not meet the state's application guidelines. They have a select list. K L J is on that list that we have to utilize. So we still intend to do some of this stuff in-house, but we went through and picked some of the most, the best candidates for this big fund this year. So typically, these bridges rehab projects cost about $125,000. We put forth 20% on that, that's 25,000 per bridge. So save us about $100,000 if we're accepted for the big funds. We have budgeted for these to move forward if needed, but we would ask for your approval of the agreement with K L J.
Do you want to mention which four bridges will be in this application?
We have two bridges on 161st, one bridge on Reservoir and one bridge on Lower Spring Creek Road.
Very good. Any public comment regarding to this? Any commission comment?
Mr. Chair.
Questions? Commissioner LaCroy?
I'd move to approve the professional service agreement 2013-01451 with K L J Engineering LLC for Bridge Rehabilitation Design Engineering with a not-to-exceed fee of 59.5.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. So Cindy, if you walk slow?
Yeah.
We'll get to the 9:15. So we'll go back to item 16.
Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And just to take up a little bit more time, you probably will be seeing more budget supplements as the need arises. We've asked the departments to put them off as long as possible. Hopefully, we won't need to see as many, just so we weren't bringing them forth every other meeting to have them done throughout the year. Hopefully, we'll have a little fewer budget supplements overall this year.
So this is the time and the place for the public hearings and several supplement resolutions. It is now 9:15, the time advertised for this. And so Cindy, I'd ask you to go ahead and explain each one, please.
Okay. The first one is S B 21-006. And this is in regards to the grant that the commissioners have made to the city of Wall for their industrial park. And so just on the bookkeeping side, we have to have spending authority in the budget for the $61,900. So we would ask for approval of the resolution for the budget supplement.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve?
Got a motion. Is there a second and a second by Commissioner Ross Connect? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion, or item number two, Cindy.
The next one is S B 21-007. Again, this is a bookkeeping thing to get the spending authority for the $2 million that the commission has granted to Pennington County Housing for the affordable housing. We request approval of the resolution approving that.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Moved to approve budget supplement resolution, S B 21-007.
And is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment on this one? Seeing none, any further questions, comments by the commission? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item three.
And the last one that we have is cleaning up the budget side for the refinance that we did of the bonds earlier this year. So that is S B 21-008 and I would ask for approval of that resolution approving that budget supplement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Lassiter. Any public comment? Any further questions or comment by the, by the commission? Seeing and hearing none, I would ask, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're down to item 19. John Morrell, Humans, Human Resources.
Morning, Commissioners. John Morrell, Pennington County Human Resources. So I've got a few different agenda items here for you today. The first two are very similar to what we've done in the past as we've looked at restructuring or reorganizing some of the departments. So the first memo has to do with new position titles within the registered deeds. It's important to understand that these are new responsibilities, new job titles, not additional FTEs. So this would continue with the current staff and I believe we have the organizational chart we submitted as well, so you can see what that looks like within her department. But we're seeking today is approval for these three new titles within the registered deeds at the pay rates that are there. The motion could read as shown at the bottom of that memo. I move to approve the vital records lean specialist position at a DBM of B 21, a starting rate of 1642 an hour. The archivist position at a DBM of B 22, a starting rate of 1838 per hour. And the documents coordinator position at a DBM of B 22 and a starting rate of 1838 per hour within the registered deeds office and to authorize human resources to update the position listing, which is on file in the HR office.
First of all, I ask, Audrey, any comments you'd like to make in regard to this, registered deeds?
Here. Audrey Castile, Pennington County Registered Deeds. We've always had two generic job titles besides the chief deputy and the registered deeds, so this is rewriting the jobs so that each position gets paid what they should for the duties that they complete. So just so you're aware.
Yeah. Commissioner Hadcock?
Well, Audrey, do you already have these people hired? Just changing the title of your people?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's, I just thought you were adding more and I was going to ask you while none turned up at time, but thank you, Ms. Audrey.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, come back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item B.
So the second request here is for a new position within the highway department, that of highway project manager. So within some of the projects and the grants and other issues that we've seen lately, there's a need to change a little bit some of the responsibilities and our direction with regard to how do we accomplish some of those goals. This is a new position, but does not add again to the FTE count within the department. There's been extreme challenges in trying to find an engineer to fill that department and with some of the grants that are available to us now, as Sean mentioned earlier, there's a certain group of vendors, if we will, contractors that we have to work with in order to qualify for those grants. This would actually give us the ability to do that with this new position. So we're asking again today to add this to the highway department. So again, the addition, we're requesting to move, add the addition of the highway project manager position to the highway department at a DBM rating of C 42, an effective hourly rate of 2954 per hour and to authorize human resources to update the position listing, which is on file. The reason I have it in here, the effective hourly rate of 2954, it's an exempt position, so it's paid bi-weekly, but this breaks it down to an hourly rate for that position.
Very good. Highway Superintendent Joel Miller, are you on the line? Not Sean Miller, or Sean Smith? Anything you want to add to this?
Sean Smith, Highway Department. Not too much. I mean, essentially, this is, we're going to advertise for this rather than the engineer to help alleviate, to fill the position that was created when I was promoted to assistant superintendent. So it'll help, help Joel, myself and our engineering techs better monitor projects and contractors and submit grants and all that, so.
Questions? Commissioner LaCroy?
Sean, so this position, would it be kind of like an entry level into what yours was at one time?
Yes.
So in all reality, we could groom somebody up if they're working on their engineering or maybe vice versa, but you're still in office and we could still use your engineering expertise just with an assistant, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there any public comment in regard to this proposal? Back to the commission, further comments?
Move for approval.
I got a, I got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you.
And a second, Commissioner Hadcock.
All right. I couldn't, sorry, Chairman, I couldn't tell if you heard me. So we do have on file already a project manager at Buildings and Grounds. Are we making John a different position? Are we following? Because if, if we're not being square across the board, how is that messing up the Gallagher study? If we're making it for individual departments instead of as project manager? And what's that comparable to John when you start switching to project manager in one department and then putting another project manager in, basically going from highway to Buildings and Grounds with, with the same position, but maybe changing a few things in the job description? So I think for me, I'll let you speak first.
John's prepared to answer.
If I could. Yes, sure. So thank you for the question, Commissioner. This is very specifically targeted towards the highway department. Thus, the title is Highway Project Manager. It differs considerably from the one in Buildings and Grounds in responsibilities and knowledge and background. So they're being specifically written not to be homogenous where they can be just shifted between departments. This is specifically for that, that purpose of replacing the engineer position that we have struggled to fill within the department, but still be able to help us achieve those goals of qualifying for the grants and being able to do the work that we need to do in the department. I don't, does that help at all, Commissioner?
So, John, so how is that comparable to the, you said because it's a highway department, but project manager, like I said, can one go to the other's position and be able to do that job and still say that, like if I went and applied for a job, I would say I was a project manager before at Buildings and Grounds or at Highway Department in order to fulfill the next job title that I would get? What would be the difference?
Chairman, or John, in my bay, this is Joe Miller.
Cool. Go ahead, Joe.
Deb, to answer your question, I actually requested the, the job description from Mike Cool with Buildings and Grounds to start this. And their, their qualifications for their project manager are much more geared towards buildings and structural type projects, whereas what we're asking for is more towards highway projects, bridges, road projects, gravel projects of the sorts. So I think to answer your question, yes, the two could probably interchange, but it wouldn't be without some additional training on one or the other's part, right? Being a project manager, you got to be pretty flexible in doing that job and being able to adapt and manage the projects that you're given. But what Buildings and Grounds is asked for is much more specialized in the structural and building aspect, whereas what we're asking for is more the bridges and the road projects. Does that make sense, Deb? Or Commissioner Hadcock, sorry?
Oh, you're good. You just called me. Yeah, that's fine. So what I'm saying, Joe, is so I'm going from a project manager managing bridges and things like that that are still structures from buildings. Are they comparable on what you're paying? Buildings, ground and highway? I mean, how are they comparable? You don't have to, see what I'm saying? Because you're still-
Yeah, John.
Still having to have the same sort of buildings. You're not doing a building, Joe. You're a civil engineer. So if you're a civil engineer, is it different when you do a building compared to a bridge?
Absolutely. I mean, there's different expertises that are involved in each one, right? I mean, because a bridge engineer can't go design a building because he's not a structural engineer, he's a bridge engineer. It much goes the same for the project manager type deal. But as far as the wage, John, I guess I don't know where they are compared to each of them. I think the, go ahead, John.
So I didn't bring that information. I believe that they're either identical in compensation or very similar in compensation, but I did not bring that with me today.
One to C 41.
Forty-one.
John, in the future, like I was telling you on Gallagher study, I'd like to see some of that in order to have evidence base to be able to speak on that. And I should have asked you ahead of time, but I didn't think about it too much until I started thinking today that Buildings and Grounds has a highway department project manager. So maybe in the future that we look at the Gallagher study and some of these things, again, I'd like to see pay scales and different stuff like that on just more information when we're changing job titles and things like that. Because I have some from Joe, but other than that, it's hard to make a good decision based on that just because of what Joe has says and what basically this pay scale is driving me nuts because it really isn't being followed, it's being changed in a way that I'm not disagreeing with the departments. I just don't get how this feeds into the Gallagher study and doesn't, doesn't make it more messed up than it already is.
Further comments? No further comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the position title. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Thank you, Commissioners. The third item I have before you is information that was gathered here over the last couple of weeks with a request for information that I sent out to all the department heads and elected officials within the county. So this summarizes, if you will, all the information and I have the responses back from each department. If there's an interest in seeing those, I have those in my office. But after reviewing the data that was collected, and again, most of the departments participated, we only had three that didn't respond to the request for information. Almost everybody did participate and had some great feedback. So some that liked the current scale and structure, some that didn't like the scale. Most of the consistent pieces, if you will- Most of the consistent pieces, if you will, I've put in here on the, the front page of the memo, so it identifies those that were the most frequent as far as responses. The inconsistent pay steps across our current scale was the largest concern. It's hard to explain, it's hard to understand because it's a different percentage each year. And then once you reach the, the step seven, which is considered midpoint on our current scale out of the 24 steps, then those increases actually reduce considerably compared to how they were for the first seven steps. So, that was the most frequent concern. The competitiveness of our pay scale, we've talked about at recent meetings as well with some of the pressures we're seeing in, in the, the existing market just in the Rapid City area of Pennington County. And you've done something already to help address that by granting the, the percent and a half COLA for next year to adjust the scale. There were some comments as well that would like to see a little more flexibility within the departments for them to set their own pay rates. So, again, I've identified those here. That would be problematic as far as ensuring any kind of consistency across the county pay scale. And it wasn't something that I'm aware of occurring. Again, this is just my fourth year, so I, I'm not aware of what transpired before that. But from what I can gather, looking at the data that we had, that hadn't been the case in the past. There was a process of coming before the board and requesting exceptions, much like we have now. So, again, that was a request. There was some confusion, if you will, over COLAs. Again, when we rolled out the structure, the idea was that there wouldn't be any COLA adjustments necessary for the first five years approximately, but in there it also said that if necessary, there would be those adjustments. For the current year, which is our first year on this new plan, the board had already approved a 1% COLA. For next year, you've already approved a percent and a half. But that message evidently didn't get to some of the department heads or to their employees. So, they weren't aware that the COLAs had actually already happened for this year or next. But that's the information that was available as well. There's a real strong interest in performance-based increases being left to the, the departments. And I agree. When we rolled out the current structure, that was the plan that we'd be able to look at that kind of an implementation with performance-based. Once we had a full year under our belt of people doing the performance evaluations, we still have a few departments that haven't started those. We've been meeting with them and frequently communicating the need to have those in place. There's still a few departments that are making that a bit more challenging, that we need some help. And I believe they really have the intent of jumping on the board with that, but it's been just so darn busy. It's been difficult for some folks to find time to first learn how the program works and then be able to apply it to their, their people. So, that is still coming. There were suggestions about the benefits programs that we offer as a county. Years ago, and I, I would say even in the last five years, the benefits overall, the complete package that the county offers was hard to compete with if you were a private employer. What we've seen in recent years, however, is private employment has boosted up the benefits that they offer their people to the point that they either match or in some cases are better than what we offer our folks as well. So, understanding what those benefits really need to be and how it might best fit the incoming employees, how do we attract new employees? Sometimes we get it in our minds that what we've done is the best and we shouldn't make any changes. I've been in the employment marketplace for a number of years and I, change is sometimes difficult. I'm not saying that there's one system or process that's better than others, but when we look at trying to attract and retain people in the marketplace today, they're looking for something different than we've traditionally offered. So, it's up to us to figure out what that is and to find a, a way to offer that to them without creating any additional costs or headaches for our existing employees. And that's a challenge. We've done a lot of long-term folks, some who have relied on the current structure of policies and payouts and things that we offer through accumulated sick leave hours or vacation hours. Those are hard to change, whether you have a minimal change or you're suggesting something larger. But again, just be aware of those, that, that those are some concerns. After that as well, I, on the second page of the memo, I listed some potential actions to address some of those items that were identified. On the bottom of the first page, I'm sorry, item 3B, there were three people that actually commented directly about wishing the Compensation Committee be reinstated. So, my first actual suggestion down how to address that would be to implement a quarterly forum, much like we do through the department head meetings, but focused only on compensation-related issues, whether it be some requests for exceptions or new positions or what have you. Have that done in a broader forum so everybody is aware of what those discussion points are versus them all being central and, and coming to me or not. And then we'd have somebody to, to listen to that, get some, some group consensus and figure out the best way probably to address some of those issues. The second one on my suggested list was explore restructured wage scale options so that we had equal percentages of increases across the board from start to finish. I've done probably six or eight different pay structures already, just to kind of see what might be possible. The pieces that I can't offer with that are the potential cost to the county. That's going to be really up to the departments and how they would apply that within the departments. For each of those six or eight different structures I've created, we'd have to figure out what the rules are to apply those. But in all cases, it would have, sorry, I talk with my hands. In all cases, it would have those equal steps from step one through the end of the scale, whatever that might be. So, I do have those for consideration as well. If the board would like to see those, I would like to offer those for review as well. Third one is something we've talked about off and on from, over a period of time, implement a very structured employee recognition program across the county. Some departments have things that they do for their people, others don't. But I think if we had some consistent guidelines and said, here's what we will do, I, I think it would help open the possibilities for some of those departments that are, are so busy that maybe they don't have a chance to, to think about those things. Again, the county benefits program is number four on my list. PTO is something that's most often suggested. Holiday scheduling as well, trying to have a system that more closely matches what the state does or the federal government does with regard to holidays. It's confusing for our employees, our current process. I think it's confusing for our constituents as well. Well, the county is open today, but the city and the banks and everything else is closed. So, I don't think we're getting full value, in my personal opinion, not anything based on fact. I don't think we're getting full value of those hours that are worked those days. And employees would much rather be home with their children or families on those days as well. So, I'll be proposing something at a future meeting in November about how we look at, at holidays as well, so.
One of the things I think we need to keep in mind on that, John, is that when the state is not open, there's several of our offices that cannot
Yes.
Do their normal routine business because of the fact that they have to work with the state, so.
Yes, sir.
Which is not necessarily the case with other cities and so forth, so.
Very true. Thank you for that, Commissioner. The last two points were ensure a COLA message is clearly communicated to the departments and the employees so that they're aware of the things that you've granted as a commission. Again, there, there seemed to be some confusion with regard to COLAs. People were saying, well, hey, we need to implement COLAs. Well, we have, but it hasn't been well communicated or done in a manner that, that stuck when that message has gone out. The sixth one on here is to conduct a mini wage study as a benchmark position. So, I had mentioned that earlier. Some of those positions that I would like to see are Highway Maintenance Worker, Correctional Officer, you know, Deputy within the Sheriff's Department, some of the administrative positions. So, I requested information already from Gallagher, who was the vendor for our most recent survey. What they did was comment that they're completing just now in the final process is completing a full wage study for the state of South Dakota, and we can have access to that information once it's done because we were participants in the, the survey process. So, I think that'll help us, give us a better idea of where some of the other similar employers are with regard to that. But it's important to know that that's not going to be all, end all with regard to information. The sheriff mentioned earlier today that the city last night approved the contract provision for the, the city police department for the certified officers. So, that will have a cascading effect as well across the city and most likely will have a, a real direct and sudden impact to what we do in the county as well, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
John, thanks for, for doing this report. And when I put it on the, the agenda as a different item, it got taken a little bit different ways all the way around. But I think the end result of what this is between you and Holly working on this, I think is outstanding because this information is, is exactly what I know I was looking for is what some of our departments are going through. And Mr. Cruz knows, when we talked slightly about that on the agenda, I wanted to send it to the department head meeting before, and, and you guys discussed it, and that's great. I think, quite frankly, this quarterly meeting or as many as you guys need to get done is not reforming the committee, but I think it gives you more one-on-one personality. I mean, between Zoom and emails and texts, people can read so much in between the lines on those, there's nothing that can replace face-to-face meetings. And I think as important as it's getting to be in our community right now and for each department, I, I think it's important that we just come together and have those discussions to see what we can do. I, I like that, and I like the work that, that this was presented, and I think you guys got a good starting point and discussions to move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I could, I want to offer this as well. So, the last two department head meetings have been completely held hostage by HR, if you will. So, it was a department head meeting, but the HR topics were pretty substantial, and we took over the entire meeting. The meeting we had last week ended up going an hour and a half, and it was just HR policies. The one before that went over two hours, again, just HR policies. But I think if we had something that focuses on compensation, a, a lot of this feedback you have received as Commissioners and I hadn't, so it makes it easier for us to get that out in the open and for everybody to hear. If one person has a concern or an idea, more than likely, there's more. But to not have that exchange in, in an open forum like that, I think is challenging, so I think that would help.
Commissioner Adka.
Yes, just a couple of things. I, I'd like to thank everybody for their feedback, and some of this stuff has been, I don't know, for everybody frustrating, but also Gallagher is new, so that makes it frustrating in a way for everybody involved, department heads, Commissioners, and employees because we're trying to make a system somewhat consistent, which is very hard to do. So, on the Compensation Committee, I think the
We lost you. I think we lost you, Deb.
John?
Oh, there we go. You're back.
So, I think with Holly and John, it's been very good them working together and then department heads hopefully can speak or write stuff to John that's working and not working, and it can be consistent. You'll start seeing areas that through 17 departments, John, that will, you know, once you hear a lot of feedback, I'd start putting more stuff out about the Gallagher again and again. So, that way you know the frustrations more and things that might need to be changed and brought back to this commission. I like the performance-related, depending on how that is structured. The COLA, I think, becomes political, as been in the past since I've been here. And that's political meaning with not department heads, it's been political with the Commissioners. Depends on what Commissioners you have. So, market considerations, I don't know if we should be matching, government should be matching with everybody. Like I said, I need more information depending on the benefits we have compared to everybody else. Does those benefits make a difference on what that wage scale or that scale is? Scale placement, I think your, your, a lot of that input was pretty awesome. Paying one, paying 100% of employee healthcare, like I said, I think, look at our benefits compared to our wage scale and what that compares to in a certain extent. I don't know if we're always supposed to match the private industry, but at this point, because of the workers, lack of workers, we have to be creative. And I think Holly and John are working on that and with the department heads. Again, performance-related, I would like to see if we're doing performance-related in departments, it's consistent. It's not because my, all my employees are great, we should all get a performance rate. That's not how it should work, and if it works that way, I wouldn't be in favor of that. But if Gary's been here, I may use you, Gary, 25 years and keeps going above and beyond, then we should do something for those employees and the longevity employees as well of how we can do and make a difference so they stay with us and that we show people that with the performance base in each department, if I'm employee and Lloyd got a raise or he got a performance base bonus, then I would want to be working for that as well. It gives somebody something else to work for besides what they already do. So, anything we can do with performance base to, to help the employees and, and have the ones that for longevity, I guess that's, that's my main key here as well. Longevity, if people are with us for this long and staying with us, that's a lot of government. If you've been in here 20, 30, even a little, 10 years, what can we do to help them feel that they like to stay with us, they want to stay with us, and that that wage scale just didn't stop at a certain part where they actually have something else to work for and look forward to?
Further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So, John, remind me, what mechanism does a county have recognizing employees that excel and work harder than other employees? Just kind of a, just kind of a overview. So, there's a lot of dialogue here, and I just really think that the, you know, the harder workers need to be recognized. And I just want, do we have, just run by or run, let me know what mechanisms we have right now and what we could do in the future to recognize employees that go on and over and above.
No, thank you for that, Commissioner. Currently, it's completely at the discretion of the departments. There's a recognition piece available to each department to recognize and honor their employees during the course of the year. But there's not a structured process to say, okay, it's based on these factors. There's also not a percentage of, of base wage increase or anything at this point. That, again, when we rolled out this new process for this year, said it would be implemented probably in 2023 because we had to have a full year of evaluations being conducted to ensure that they're being done in a manner that actually recognizes those efforts and acknowledges that through the performance rating as well, and that we're giving feedback to our employees based upon their performance and things that they could improve upon or to show appreciation again for the things that they have been very successful at and done over and above. So, a short answer to that is there's not a process right now.
I thought in the Gallagher wage scale, when we first started going the Gallagher, there was a matrix where you could sit there and identify the, kind of a grading process.
Yes, sir.
That would have an impact on wages.
Yes, sir. So, that's part of this process. Again, that would go with performance evaluations, and that would be for the 2023 year fiscal year. We need to have the performance evaluations in order to use the matrix, because it's rated upon their performance levels, and then that would determine then whatever percentage of increase they would, would receive based on the performance. So, that's not an automatic, and again, there's not that, we don't have complete integration, if you will, of those performance evaluations throughout the county yet. We're working towards that.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, John.
Go ahead. You have more? I'm done. So, John, this turned into a seven-page document.
Yes, sir.
Which I, I appreciate the information, but there's a lot to consider here when you start trying to look at the big picture. With our employees, we have 800-plus employees. We have a huge percentage of those that probably work shifts, 24-hour shifts. So, there's consideration, I think, that needs to be looked at when we do anything relative to those individuals, plus the fact that we, we tried to implement a, a program, the Gallagher program, tried to implement it, and not necessarily did it all work, but it wasn't all because of just the program. I mean, we've had a lot of other things that have entered into our world at this point in time and making it very difficult. I don't think there's anything that we as a commission are going to determine or make motions on today, but I think all this information that you've gathered is, is good information and needs further work. But I appreciate the effort that was put in by department heads and yourself in order to do this. Kevin, I saw you move forward. I presume you have some comments you'd like to make on this?
Thank you. Kevin Tone, Pendleton County Sheriff, and appreciate, John, putting all the information together and, you know, Compensation Committee as it existed before. And, you know, compensation committee, as it existed before, I don't think is what we want today, but I think we need some mechanism for feedback going forward. And I don't think we need to sit down as a compensation comedian, go through individual grading of positions, and get into the minutia of John's world every day, but I think we've lost some of our communication at kind of that twenty-thousand-foot level that existed before. And John talked about quarterly meetings, and I don't think that's enough, not that I want more meetings, but everything's very fluid right now. And John referenced the last department head elected official meeting we had, and we spent an hour and a half talking about HR and nothing else. I got the information at three-thirty the day before, with pages of stuff to read for a ten o'clock meeting the next morning. It doesn't allow for a lot of good feedback and discussion, and, you know, a time for people to digest it. I hadn't have the time to plunk through some of it, but again, there was stuff I didn't have time to plunk through. So if there was some mechanism where a group of individuals could help provide kind of the twenty-thousand-foot, you know, view of things, and help John sort through the seven pages of feedback, I think it'd be beneficial for the county. I think it'd get more buy-in and feedback from the elected officials and department heads. And, you know, John referenced several pieces about where employees and others, there wasn't enough communication. I just, again, I think we need to get back to some mechanism that gives us a higher level of communication. Everything's very fluid right now, so that's my comments, and thanks for putting it all together, John.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
I have a question, and, you know, I'm new here, so I haven't been here for all this time to know all the nitty-gritty ins and outs and stuff. But, John, do we give our employees a summary of compensation? In other words, their pay, their, you know, their benefits, their medical benefits, is there anything in the Gallagher study or anything that kind of shows an overview? In other words, when I worked for the federal government, we used to get, every year, we used to get a summary of our compensation, which, you know, this is how much you've made in the year, or this is how much you will make in the year, this is how much your medical benefits are. So I may have made sixty-four thousand dollars, but whenever you look at all my compensation, it shows that I was at seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventeen two cents. I just threw that out there just to be kind of funny, but you see what I'm saying? Because sometimes you don't realize what your overall compensation is if you only look at it in the monetary side, that I make eight sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents an hour, but you don't realize it. So, you know, something that I would encourage you to look into, see what it would do to do that, because that would also probably help an individual understand what their overall compensation is.
No, I appreciate the request, Commissioner. That's been something we've talked about for years, as I understand, before I got here as well. Our current payroll system doesn't have a way to provide that, if I'm speaking correctly. But it doesn't provide the information that would provide that kind of a summary. It would be a manual process. We looked at it last year again, we looked at it again this year. We can do a manual, here's what you get. It depends on what they've selected throughout the course of the year as well, for benefits and other things. It's a manual process from what I have taken in, so.
Cindy.
Cindy Muller, auditor. In our payroll system, or on the pay stubs, there is a benefit section, so people can see what their benefits that they are receiving. John's right, as far as just pulling together a report that says Cindy Muller, and this is what I made, and this is all the benefits, and giving one grand total, there isn't something within the system that could actually produce that for us. It would be fairly manual.
So what's nice, I'm sorry. So the other piece with that, what's generally on those reports too, Commissioner Lassiter, at least what I've received in the past, it shows the contribution of Social Security. It summarizes what's on the pay stubs now, but in a, here's your report, and here's your total earnings for the year. It's an amazing report. We don't have the ability to do those with our current system. It's the information that's on the pay stub, but there's not a reporting functionality within this current structure. No, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think that would be amazing.
How many of our employees are on direct deposit?
Everybody.
Everybody's on direct deposit. So unless they, unless they go out and actually look, they're not seeing what's on the pay stub either.
Yes, sir, that would be true. We have employees throughout the course of the year that say, hey, I've been here for six years, and I've never logged in, can you show me how to get into the system to see my pay stub? I personally don't look at them. I haven't. So, I mean, it's just one of those reports, it's like, okay, you got paid, that's great. My spouse lets me know if my check was deposited, or if some things follow. There's a lot of folks like that that just don't look. It would be nice, and again, going back to the recognition piece, I tie that with this, if we had some kind of a recognition year-end, saying, hey, you know what, thanks for the great year you had, here's a thank you card, here's whatever, a handshake, and a pat on the back, and appreciation of some type, but then that summary report could be there as well. You know what your base wage is, but when you look at all the other things that are factored in, it's an astronomical number, or can be. So, yeah, there's a huge benefit to having those types of reports. I don't have a solution for it, unfortunately, but I love them.
Okay. So further comments by the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laskinick.
So, John, and you hear, and even when we talked a couple of weeks ago, you talked about a smaller group, and even with this quarterly, it sounds like there's some discussions that need to go on. I don't know if the commission needs to approve that or not. I think that's something-
Yes.
-you can organize, you know, Holly can organize, and start working on together, if I'm correct. I don't want to overtalk for the commission, but that seems a good starting point for it.
Well, and again, as the sheriff mentioned, and I mentioned earlier, HR has taken over the discussion for these last couple of department head meetings. Because it is such a big deal, and it touches every person in the county, I would like to set that up so we can have those, whether it be monthly, or quarterly, or every two months, it doesn't matter, as long as there are mechanisms to collect that information and be able to discuss it and figure out what to do with it.
Otherwise, Mr. Chair, just a little latitude. I just wanted to bring up, I'd gotten an email from an employee over the weekend, I'm sure all the commissioners did, and I just wanted to, I thought about addressing it, but I'd rather do it publicly. I feel for the employee, and I understand what he's doing, and I can tell you, I worked for the county for nine years back when I was detox, and working two jobs and three jobs, and I'd been offered full-time through the county through those nine years, but my other job was paying me a dollar more, but the honest truth of it was, is the county job, or the job that I had, didn't have all the benefits the county did, and I wasn't quite aware of all that in the long run. I just wanted to share that to this employee, and many more that are working. Our pay structure in the county may not be the best. There's some out there, but let me tell you, some of the private companies, at some point, they're maybe paying well now, but they're also, when things go down, they're going to reduce their staff quickly and fast. One of the things the county has done has been steadily, steadily kept up. It takes us a while to get there, it does, because of the way our budgets are and the way the community is. But we do have a very well benefit when it comes to PTO, retirement, and that type of stuff. It may take a while for people to realize that, but I just wanted to share that to this employee and many others, that we may be a little bit under the private sector, but we are always going to be here, and you're not going to get, but soon as things, in five years, when things drop down, you're not going to be the first one to go, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Further comments? Cindy.
I'm just gonna kind of tag on to what, or reiterate what the sheriff said, that I think some sort of forum for everyone to come together to collaborate, because of how many people HR impacts, I think it's really important to have all that feedback from more than just one person, more than just an email, because like Commissioner Lasky said, sometimes those aren't always taken in the right context, so I just wanted to show my support for that.
Okay, thank you. Well, and I certainly don't disagree with that. I think, I think we need to have formation of something in order to move forward on this, and start paring the information down so that we have some decisions that can be made moving forward. What I'm opposed to is making decisions that inadvertently cause more problems than they do good in the meantime. So I'd like to see it as a package that we can accommodate moving forward. I think, I think we're at a point of bringing this back with a recommendation of how, you know, working with our commission manager, and department heads, and yourself, John, and figuring out how the best avenue is of moving forward at this, of pulling the information together in some sort of a forum in which we can actually see how it would impact our current situation through the departments.
No, that sounds wonderful, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for me today, then?
Anything else? Thank you, John.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty.
Sean Smith, Highway Department. Item twenty is a request for a variance to ordinance fourteen to allow for a second approach on Campfire Drive. We did a site visit, I provided some photos here. Ultimately, the Highway Department is not in favor of this. We feel there's other options that can be, can be utilized to access both garage, whether it be from this proposed location for an approach, or from the existing approach. My opinion on the site visit, the proposed location is a better location for approach to this property. It's at the end of the curve, it provides better site distance. I mean, seeing one of the pictures from the existing approach, that there's a cluster of trees there. This is a low-volume road, it serves about twenty parcels through access. Mr. Wilson is here for comment, and I, at that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions to Sean before we turn it over to Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laskinick.
Sean, I'm trying to, I'm looking at an exhibit, it's a diagram that shows the gray water, black water slope, and I'm assuming a current driveway off of Campfire.
Correct.
And where is the second, I don't see where the second one is.
The second approach is located around the curve to the west, and there's kind of a straight area.
Do you have an exhibit that I could look at that?
I, yeah. Cody, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, Ron, are you looking at this map right here?
Right.
So if you look at that line where it says well fifty feet, if you go straight out that line where it gets to the property line, that's roughly where, just for reference to that map.
Okay, so then Highway Department's making the statement that the, that approach would not be needed because the existing approach would accommodate the needs of the applicant?
I think with some regrading, yes. I believe you could regrade with what's on the existing to get to this, or if we relocate to the new proposed approach and eliminate that existing approach, I think you can access his drive-under garage on that property through that.
I'll wait to hear from the applicant.
Mr. Wilson.
Well, this is all new to me. I'm Randy Wilson, I'm the property owner here. What we're looking at on this diagram, the orange markings is not where the actual property line is at.
Actually, here.
Yeah, it's, yeah, right there, and then along the, right along the edge of the road. What I don't understand is, between the height here and down here, that's approximately twelve feet from the upper lot to the lower side that I'd have to grade.
I guess me standing, I mean, just looking, I mean, being there and at my photos, I don't see where twelve foot from here to here.
Okay.
Here, yes, back by your house, yes.
That's going to come out at the foot up to here, to keep the garage leveled on the side. So from down here to the upper level, which it only have twenty-five feet clearance, that would be roughly ten, at least ten feet of uphill bank, which would also change the drainage coming down the hill from the west, would run it down into my lower level, possibly into the garage, if not.
Do you have a minute?
Commissioner Adcock?
We, we-
One second.
So here's the issue when we went out there, full disclosure, went out there with the Highway Department, with the Planning Department, and with Commissioner Lassiter. What we're finding is if you look at Agenda Item A, that's in your packet for the planning, and this item, those surveys don't match. So what's happening is, we talked, and Cody can verify this, from Ann, who does our stuff from Register of Deeds, those two pictures are not matching. So if you look at Item A in your packet for planning, it says that the applicant provide a site survey, standby register survey, to show that proposed garage will meet the required twenty-five foot setback. First, you're going to need a survey that actually is accurate in order to prove that, even before you can issue a building permit. So I think it should be continued until we figure out our, Mr. Randy brings us a survey that's not from two different, it looks like, one's from a realtor, and one's from a plat of twenty-two. But again, these surveys aren't accurate because they're both different. So I agree with Planning Department, I think that at this point, we should get an accurate survey, then have him come back and explain basically that he needs that second approach. That's my opinion. I think it's the opinion, I believe, of the Planning Department, because they wrote it in their recommendations under Item A.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laskinick.
Being sisters in my district, I'd be more than willing to continue this, and I'll make a site inspection with the Highway Department and the applicants, so we're all on the same page, because it's hard to make a decision looking at a drawing, you know, it's, it gives me an idea, but until we do the site visit, it would be hard for me to decide one way or another today.
I, excuse me, Commissioners, I just, I did have Dean Scott surveyors come out to find where my spots were at on the curve, like we were talking, she was talking about Commissioner Hadcock, that things didn't jive quite right, but I have since had them come out to survey the curve.
Kind of a location survey.
A location survey for the curve, and, yeah, it might be best if we do an onsite evaluation here.
Because otherwise, I'm afraid this could go south for you, and I think you deserve us coming out one more time, taking a better look at it, and I know exactly where it's at, and I can make myself available most of the time to come out and take a look at it.
Yeah, Commissioner Laskinick, being there, there's discrepancies on elevation, I would agree, I would like to be out there to check grades and see what the grades are.
So we'll, after this, we'll set a time that we can all meet.
Yep.
So my motion would be to continue until the next meeting.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to continue until the next meeting, which is November second.
Yes.
Commissioner Adcock?
Yes, sir. So, Randy, surveying the right-of-way by the road, that's not the only discrepancy for the garage, sir. You have different numbers on both those surveys that you have or pictures, one from the Highway Department, where it sent them one, and one from Item A for your garage. So instead of just surveying just the front portion by the road, sir, make sure those stakes and everything are right, because your fence line is different on one than the other when we went to look, there's just a lot of discrepancies on the west side and the south side there. And again, Randy, if you're going to need a building permit, that survey is going to be needed on all the property lines. So on Item A, again, on for your garage, it says that the applicant provide a site survey, standby register survey, to show that the proposed garage will meet the required twenty-five foot setback on the property lines prior to obtaining the building permit. So if I were you, I would have him do the whole survey, basically, because you're building a thirty-six-by-forty-two detached garage, sir, to make sure your garage doesn't end up even close to anybody else's property line as well, and those setbacks meet the right requirements, Randy.
Excuse me, one second. Did you just say a-tached garage?
No, she's, what she's referring to is, under planning and zoning, your item is A under that. I think that's where the A came into. She's, I don't, I don't think Commissioner Adcock indicated it was, she thought it was attached.
Oh, it is a detached outfit that I am going for. And we did do all four corners of the survey. I'm just waiting for them to get a copy of that to me yet, they haven't done that. We got the two corners down on Highway three eighty-five, and the corner up to the north, the northwest side, and then all around the whole curve, we just did that- the northwest side, and then all around the whole curve, we just did that here two weeks ago.
So, sir, that would be helpful to submit that at this point, and then when you go out there, have that survey for the Highway Department and Planning to look at, sir.
Okay, I've got a motion to continue until November second for the discussion.
Who was the second on that?
Commissioner Lassiter.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Sean, you'll help set a date, then we can meet.
Yes, I will.
Probably should have planning and zoning there as well.
Yep, I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Yep. Item twenty-two, any members of the public here wishing to address the commission on any particular items? Seeing none, go to item twenty-three, executive session, I would take a motion to go to executive session.
Mr. Chairman, move to go to executive session.
I've got a motion as our second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner La Croix, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That was a weak second.
Next items are actually scheduled for ten-thirty, so...
That's where Sean...
Yep, are you on?
Yes, sir.
I need a, I need a motion to, uh, go to Board of Adjustment.
To come out of executive session first.
I need a motion to come out of executive...
Move to come out of executive session.
Got a motion by Rosskineck, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now I need a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So move.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First item, Cody.
Cody Stack, Environmental Planner. Agenda Item A is variance via twenty-one dash thirty-four, and is to allow an accessory structure, a garage, to be located in the front yard of a residential zoning district less than one acre in size. The applicant landowner is Randy and Denise Wilson. The location of the property is one-two-six-four-five Campfire Drive, involves three-point-four-six acres. Current zoning is rural residential district, and the existing land use is residential, access is off Campfire Drive, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Well, when reviewing variances, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong number one, whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest, I will read the responses, and they're on the board as well.
Okay, Cody, let me stop you a second. So we just had Mr. Wilson relative to, on the highway issue, and we continued that until November second. Would it be appropriate, I'll ask this upfront, would it be appropriate to continue this until that November second, too, do some issues here pertain to this also?
Um, it could if the Board of Commissioners wishes to do that. The, granting the variance and the approach and the building permit don't necessarily run together, so you could grant the variance or deny the variance and still do the approach part at a different meeting. It just would allow him to, in thirty days' time, apply for a building permit, because there is that appeal period, so if you push this back two weeks, it'll push his ability to apply for a building permit back two weeks. If he gets the variance and he doesn't get the second approach, he would just have to work with either the existing approach he has or not put the garage in or check the location.
Commissioner Rosskineck, would you like this part of it continued also, or do you want us to move?
Well, I figure as long as I'm here, Randy Wilson, property owner at Campfire Drive, as long as I'm here today, if you don't mind, we just go on with this part, I think it'd be fine.
Okay.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock?
So in order to make a good decision, I think, again, that survey's gonna make the difference on this property, to allow accessory structure, a garage relocated in the front yard of a residential zoning district less than one acre in size. Again, you probably want to know on survey, how far that garage is, if the garage is in the right place, before you grant that the accessory structure or detached garage even meets those setbacks, or does he need another variance or some other stuff with that garage, just in case that survey comes back showing different than what it's saying on this paper. Again, says again, the applicant provides a site survey, standby a register survey to show the proposed garage will meet the required twenty-five foot setback. So Randy, I'm not trying to delay you, but I think that's a crucial thing to get this done right the first time, so you also don't have to come back, or we make a decision that's important.
Mr. Chair. One second, Commissioner Rosskineck. So, Mr. Wilson, I just want you to also understand, when we sat as the Board of Adjustment, we need a supermajority in order to approve something, so we need four of the five Commissioners voting in favor, or?
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, so I don't want to put you in a position either where, because of Commissioners believing they need additional information, that they may not vote in favor of what you're requesting here either.
I believe that that November second meeting would suffice, we could postpone this till that time.
Okay, Commissioner Rosskineck.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I was just gonna mention that, one of the conditions was that the applicant provides a site survey, standby registered survey, to show the proposed garage will meet required twenty-five foot setback. If they want, if they want to wait until November the second, I'm certainly good with that, too.
So Cody, I think if there's, if there's a motion to continue this, I don't think we need to go through the preliminary information. Is there a motion to continue this, this item?
Move to continue until the November second meeting.
Second. We've got a motion and a second to continue to November second, further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, um, got a new item here I need to share. The following matters in our uncontested hearings are those which the Planning Department has not yet received or provided comment contesting the item. The documents for each item have been reviewed by the Commissioners, and decisions during these hearings will be made based on the information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If we receive comment contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. So the next item is an uncontested hearing, Item B.
Do you still have to come out of Board of Adjustment, though?
Move to come onto the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All those, all those in favor of the motion and the second to come out of Board of Adjustment?
Aye.
Saying aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, just a question.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Adcock.
So, Brittany, is this something that our committee for, that we had made and put together, are we supposed to go through this public hearing ordinance amendment, or is that a different committee that goes through the Pennington County Building Code and Construction Order?
No, the committee, the Planning Committee we had was for the subdivision regulations.
Okay, I apologize, Mr. Wilson.
Go ahead, Brittany.
Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Item B is public hearing of ordinance amendment oh-eight-twenty-one dash twenty-one, Pennington County, to add ordinance number seven thirty-five, Pennington County Building Code and Construction Ordinance. This was heard in front of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did recommend to continue this ordinance amendment to the November second, twenty-twenty-one Board of Commissioners meeting, they wanted additional time to look it over to make some potential changes.
So...
So I have a motion to continue this item to the November second meeting also.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion. Is there anybody from the public that was here in regard to, to this? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Item C is public hearing, a major planned unit development amendment PU sixteen dash zero-three for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Century Home Construction LLC, Century Land Holdings LLC, and Summer Creek Inn LLC, to amend the existing planned unit development to request changes to the conditions of approval, conditions four, seven, eleven, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, and forty-four, to allow a specialty resort development to include uses such as vacation home rentals, weddings, receptions, picnics, family reunions, single-family residences, bed and breakfasts, storage, gift shops, spa, cabana, bistro, detached accessory structures with living quarters, duplexes, et cetera, on the subject properties. Staff went over the requested changes with the Planning Commission, they were in concurrence with all of the staff's recommendations, with the exception of condition number twenty-seven that had to do with the event structure, section, or, excuse me, condition number twenty-seven, as recommended by the Planning Commission, will read that the event structure referred to in condition number twenty-five shall be the, shall be for the existing forty-by-one-hundred event area that is currently covered by the forty-by-one-hundred-foot membrane tent and used as open space and covers the existing kitchen and bathroom. The event structure shall be made of six-inch-thick insulated stick-built sides which tie into the existing stick-built kitchen and bathroom structure, a membrane roof shall be permitted to remain.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rosskineck.
I've been working with Dan and Nancy probably for two years on this, and I've met with Dan and Nancy with our Planning Department, and we decided the best way to go to rectify all these, a lot of issues were to do the major amendment to the planned unit development, and that's exactly the process that they've gone through. I've watched the video last week at the planning meeting, and I concur with their findings.
Mr. Chairman, and I was on that planning and zoning committee meeting as well, so we had some significant input on this particular item as well, so, and I, I believe I concurred with their, with the vote as well.
Thanks, anonymous.
Are there any members of the public here that wish to address this issue?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock?
So, Brittany, we had rules and regulations on this tent before, this structure, and since then, it's been changed, I see. So did they comply with what we asked of them last time?
So that's what the request was for, they had requested, under the previous condition of approval, was that they had put a stick-built roof on by September twenty-twenty-one. Again, I will reiterate what Commissioner Rosskineck had stated, that we had met with the applicants, and indicated to them that the only way to make any kind of change to any of those conditions, because it was a specific motion by the Board of Commissioners, that they had to go through the major amendment process to make those changes.
Okay, so when we, when we said that, and we said it needed to be stick-built, and how it needed to be built, that was with the fire administrator and many people coming out there to look at this. So they, at this point, they don't, they need to replace the stick-built roof, or they don't?
Planning, Planning Commission's recommendation was that they do not need to replace the membrane.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so here's the bottom line, we went through extensive years going through this with other people besides Commissioners and the planning members that are there today, and does it look beautiful? Everybody agreed it looked nice, but because of fires and other stuff, because of the permanent foundation that is on this, that's why it was recommended for stick-built, for safety reasons. They put in holes, and they put in a fire, meaning a kitchen, as fire administrator can attest to, that was attached to the ground, and that was permanent. So what that made it was a different type of property or different type of structure once you permanently secured it to the ground. So for safety reasons, and because I've been through this before, I know you've met with planning Commissioners and things like that, some of those people haven't been on there, and Commissioners, this has been contested because of safety reasons on this roof, so for me to sign off and say this is okay, again, Brittany, did the fire administrator and the fire service board members that are, district that is in that area, did they sign off on this, saying this was a safe structure at this point?
I spoke with Jerome Harvey yesterday, he stated he would have been here to speak to it, but he could not, he's actually in peer at the mental health, the first responders' task force, so that's why he could not be here today to speak to it.
Well, I believe that's a crucial part of this, I know he's worked with Commissioners and stuff, but if there is a fire safety on this structure, and like I said, they do a beautiful job on their land and their areas, but for this structure and some of the issues that we've had before on these properties for follow-through, saying one thing and doing another right now, I would say you want to continue this until you have input from your fire administrator, or one for the structure. And number two, I think bottom line for me is what you say is what you should do, this is the most stipulations I've ever seen on properties for that reason. Like I said, beautiful property, but you can't, you have to follow the rules and regs, and I still think that tent looks beautiful, but I still think there's a fire danger with what we're letting with the membrane.
Commissioner Rosskineck.
Yes, and that was brought up at the Planning Commission as well, the threat of that material having some burning capacity, and that material is probably less, more fire-retardant than a wood frame roof, based on the manufacture of the material and documentation that they provided to the, to the owners. So that concern was, wasn't really, the issue of safety wasn't really a concern to the Planning Commission because of the, I think Travis can probably attest to that more than I can, but the material is very fire-retardant that is currently on the roof.
Right, and I remember the original spec, I mean, I don't remember them a hundred percent, because it's been a while since it came to me originally, but I do remember having the original specs from the fire, you know, I can't remember the acronym of it, but when it was evaluated from whenever it was first placed upon, so I know I have heard individuals saying they were concerned about it, but when you, when you look at it overall, the data that we saw, if I remember correctly, because I remember voting for it originally, was, it was very fire-retardant and had a very, it couldn't even really burn, as far as I could tell, if I remembered correctly, but that's been like four years ago, but I'm pretty sure that it was, you know, when I voted for it, it gave me confidence to say that this material was acceptable to be, to be there, so. And I've done a couple of site visits, in fact, I think I did a site visit just within a week and a half ago or so, I, it was within the last two weeks.
Mr. Chair, further discussion. Commissioner La Croix.
I'd make the motion to approve the major planned unit development amendment PU sixteen dash zero-three with amended language to conditions numbers twenty-seven with forty-five conditions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock?
Okay, so the retardant roof and people saying because of the specs, you also didn't have it a permanently structured with a concrete base, that's the same thing that was the argument last time for fact-finding, administrator said same thing, fire administrator. Anything burns, it can be retardant, just because it says retardant doesn't mean a stick-built roof done right with shingles and everything else would be better in one sense, but the other, he said that roof would go faster, plus the exits and things in there. Bottom line is, they put a permanently improved kitchen in there with a fire-retard roof. Basically, you built a tent over a kitchen that's supposed to be in a different structure, so to say it's fire-retardant and it's safe, again, same argument, same thing as last time, and again, nothing has changed, they did not improve that structure by September, they did not follow-through. Number two, a lot of these issues that were in there were not followed-through, they had to be brought back over and over again, so these two people would follow the rules and regulations. So I will not be voting for this at this time, based on fire administrator, based on past of not follow-through on rules and regulations that we have had in the Planning Department.
Further discussion, probably want to do a roll call? Yep, I will. Any further discussion? Dan, would you like?
Good morning, Commissioners. I, uh...
Identify yourself.
Danny Evangelisto. I think what Commissioner Hadcock is saying is not correct, this roof structure is non-flammable, does not put off toxic fumes. This roof structure is non-flammable, does not put off toxic fumes. We did all this presentation in front of Jerome, gave him more engineering and more certification on this event center than anything else I've ever built. The state-certified kitchen is sheet-rotto 5/8 sheet-rock, which meets all safety code requirements all the way around that whole kitchen, so that even if that's an argument, it's not going to get out of that kitchen up to, even if that did burn. And her argument that a stick-built roof is less flammable than that is, is, is no way it could be, I mean.
Is there an internal roof over the top of the kitchen area?
It's, it's wood-framed, insulated, and 5/8 sheet-rock, like a commercial kitchen.
Okay. Any further questions of Dan? Comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Posed.
Go.
Vote is four to one, so it's passed. Commissioner Haddcock voting no. Thank you. Item D.
Item D is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA-21-18 for Pennington County to add section 329 pre-screening procedure for marijuana licenses to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of ordinance amendment OA-21-18. They did recommend one change to the document on page two under item C. They recommended to add "this may be delayed at the applicant's request or for good cause" to that section. Other than that, there were no other changes from staff's recommendation.
Move for approval.
Pagan.
I've got a motion from Commissioner La Croix, second by Commissioner Lauster, to approve. Is there any public comments in regard to this item? Seeing none, any further discussion by the commission for these screening requirements? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Item E.
Item E is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA-21-19 for Pennington County to amend section 511A1 fees, to amend and supersede the existing section 511A1 fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of ordinance amendment OA-21-19 with no changes.
Brittany, this only requires one reading, correct?
Pardon?
This only requires one reading, correct?
Correct.
So, the, the motion would be, in order to adjust the fees on commercial building permits, to move to approve ordinance amendment OA-21-19. Is there any public comments in regard to this? Back to the commission, any comments or a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
I've got a motion to approve by Commissioner La Croix, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roskinak. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Item F.
Item F is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA-21-20 for Pennington County to amend section 216, planning unit development district, to amend and supersede the existing section 216, planning unit development district of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Planning Commission did recommend approval of ordinance amendment OA-21-20 with no changes. The reason for this ordinance amendment was to reflect the changes in review to 2040 comprehensive plan, because planning unit developments are no longer a zoning district, but are going to be viewed as overlay districts. So, this will reflect that change that was put forth in their comprehensive plan back in May. One of the biggest changes with this PUD overlay and the purpose for them are in instances where multiple conditional uses would be necessary. Also, the PUD overlay district does actually indicate that it would have to conform to the underlying zoning districts and land uses in the area. And the other major change or item of note is that any specialty resorts or recreational resorts will have to be PUD overlays moving forward.
Any public comment in regard to this proposal? If not, is there a motion by the commission? Move to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Lauster, is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner La Croix. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items from commission members.
Nope.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
Brittany, can you come back up to the podium, please? Can you explain to the commission the questions that I'm getting asked from Dale Holdhauser, who's on the Hill City Council? Their concern is that if we allow a medical marijuana facility within five miles of Hill City, and I'm trying to explain to him our rationale that we probably can't do that, but I just thought we'll share that with the commission today, too.
Sure. So, one of the reasons, the State's Attorney's Office, Megan Kruger and I, we looked into this, the majority of our commercial and industrial zoning districts are within that three-to-five-mile area, so if we were to create a three-to-five-mile buffer outside of city zoning districts, because we don't believe you could just pick one city, it would have to be all the municipal, all the municipal areas. You would essentially zone out the ability to have a marijuana business if you put in some kind of buffer zone, a three-to-five-mile buffer zone outside of a city limit. So, essentially, you would be saying in our ordinance that you're allowed to have them, but essentially, there would be no way to meet the requirements.
So, so was Dale talking about the zoning, because we, we still have the latitude when we look at the conditional use permit, if it's on commercial or light industrial, so that if we are going through the conditional use permit application process, we have time to address the city's concerns with something being too close?
Yes, that is something that could happen with the conditional use permit process. The Planning Commission would hear the conditional use permit, the neighbors within the 500 feet are notified, and actually, I think it's 1,000 feet, and for medical marijuana businesses or marijuana businesses is 1,000 feet. The other issue with having that kind of buffer, if you were to look at rezoning to those districts, they may not, it'll be difficult for them to conform to surrounding land uses outside of those, you know, when you get outside of that.
I, I think the city just wants to have some, say, when one of these gets permitted, and so it sounds like there is a process for that to happen.
Sure. During the conditional use permit process, there is an opportunity for them to speak to it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Other items from the chair or commission members. Commissioner Haddcock.
What? I didn't ask this.
Do you have any, any items you want to report to the commission outside of your normal scheduled meetings?
Uh, no, sir. I'm good.
Done?
No. She said.
Commissioner Roskinak. Anything further?
Oh, no, I'm done.
Okay, I've got a number of items here. I did receive yesterday a letter from Colonel Sheffield from the Ellsworth Air Force Base thanking us for the letter that we sent back in July requesting the Restoration Advisory Board, called RAB, be reestablished at Ellsworth Air Force Base. He says that after review, he's determined at this time there is not sufficient and sustained community interest in reestablishing the RAB. So, response was no on that. Couple of other things. Commissioner Roskinak and I did meet at Silver City with the Garbage Association. We, our plan is, is to further meet with the State's Attorney's Office in regard to this and the Highway Department. Their request is to continue to be able to keep the community garbage collection on the right-of-way. The other one has been moved to private property. Also met with Auditor Cindy Moller and Legislative Auditor Alan Schaefer. Schaefer has just completed the 2020 Pennington County Audit. I've got to give a lot of credit to our auditor and her staff. This is an absolute clean audit, no exceptions, so congratulations to Cindy and her staff. There is a, there are a couple of letters, if the commissioners choose to read those, they're pretty standard letters, but basically, the bottom line is, is zero exceptions to the audit. Also, you know, the, I met with Liz Hamburg and Chris Huber of Black Hills Community Foundation. They're trying to fill in now, where David Lust was working on setting up the, to raise funds for a lending program for the housing workforce program. I've explained that we've given our support, this commission gave its support, to the Pennington County Housing in the form of $2 million, and for infrastructure for wall at the amount of that $661,000, and that as one commissioner, I did not feel that we're probably in any position to contribute to that fund, but I did suggest to them that if they wanted to make contact with the other commissioners, that they had a right to, to do that. Also, Commissioner Roskinak and I met with Toby Morris of Collier Securities and Jim and Andy Skoll relative to the proposed housing development off Anderson Road. They have acquired Toby's assistance in putting the information together, as they will be seeking a TIF for that project, getting that infrastructure laid in there. I did request Toby figure cost of a satellite sheriff's office in the development, so that we may have that conversation of future needs for the area. And so, and I didn't hear any objection from the Skolls in adding that, so that we can at least put that into our discussion items. I attended the West Dakota Water District meeting last week. Deanne, ours, Mark Mayer, attended asking assistance to make developers aware of their responsibility in regard to water rights and permitting. Banner gave a report and all information they have gathered relative to projected water needs in western South Dakota. Information on projected growth in next several decades, plus the overall needs of quality of water is substantial. We, as a commission, all met at Hill City for that site visit on Friday, and then yesterday, I did attend the executive board meeting. The Black Hills Council local governments were reviewing the bylaws and personnel policies there. Commissioner La Croix.
The only thing outside of that is I attended Youth and Boundaries Services meeting, which is pretty normal, but the one stood out the most was the, the opening of Monument Arena. We had opening of the Monument Arena, did a tour of that, and I felt that was a pretty amazing facility, walking around, going up the different stairs and checking it out. It's going to be, I think, once we get through this pandemic stuff, where it's going to be bringing just moments of entertainment to our community, and they're already talking about the expansion of the rodeo when it comes in January, so.
Good. Commissioner Lauster.
So, on October 14th, I got to be a part of the Ag Task Force meeting. I was invited after speaking with a legislator and a couple other individuals about what you see before you draft 50, and so, being a part of that, I wanted to have someone who's got way more knowledge on this particular draft bill and give us a presentation, so I requested that Representative Ladner come up here and give us an overview of that, since she can probably speak to it way better than I could, so I would like to turn it over to her to give an overview of the Ag Task Force meeting, since I was on the road, so I didn't get to hear all of it, so.
Say it, Representative Trish Ladner. Come forward, please.
Good morning.
Good to see you again. I'm happy to be here this morning. We are, let's see if I can make those a full screen, working on a bill, and right now it's called Draft Bill 50. It's a grassland tax relief bill. Department of Revenue has proposed soil reassessments and tax tables that could tax our ranchers out of business. Some of our ranchers are looking at 280 to 300% increase in their taxes should the new soil assessments be implemented. Up on your screen, you'll see a draft of, of the Bill 50. And I just have to ask a question, what would you do if you got a notice in the mail that said your taxes are going up 300%? After I pick myself up off the ground, I, I would probably cry. Their taxes have been going up historically as it is, but this new soil reassessment was done with artificial intelligence, not one boot on the ground, and it hyper-affects West River, because they've gone through and said that grassland that has been grassland for sometimes 100 years on family farms now shows the prospect of being cropland. So, that land will be taxed as cropland, and your taxes will go up. So, I'm going to speak to Fall River County, because I live in Fall River County, I represent District 30, but I can get the facts from Susie Haynes, the Director of Equalization in Fall River County. She's actually, actually the one that cracked the nut, that there was, the system was broken, and the calculations were broken. As a result, Department of Revenue has pulled back the soil reassessments and the tables instead of implementing them. They had, after hours of meeting with them, they had to admit it was broken, so they've taken it back to work, the bugs out. Meantime, our ranchers are facing what could be catastrophic to them, and according to Susie Hayes, if we can pass Draft Bill 50, it corrects over 85% of the problems our ranchers are facing, and as a first bite to this problem, I think 85% is pretty good. I'm, I'm good with that. South Dakota, we're extremely diverse, the terrain, the soils, the rainfall, and in the West River, we ride the range. East River, they ride a John Deere, and that, to me, shows you all the difference you really need to know. East River has the rainfall, they have the soil, and it shows in their cropping ability. The, the two pictures on the other side of the page, I took, they're one day apart, both in a drought season this year in September. East River is absolutely gorgeous, the grass is blowing in the breeze, it's beautiful. You come back over here to West River, and we've got the crunchy grass, the yuccas, the prickly pear cactus. In fact, I'm convinced that is our crop. USDA issued reports on cropping throughout South Dakota. I have corn, sunflower, and soybean up there, and you can see, if you look at sunflower and soybean, there's absolutely no cropping, or just a teensy bit on West River, depending on what you look at. Typically, West River, one, one cow calf requires 30 to 60 acres, depending on the region you live in, the terrain, and the rainfall. If you get down into Edgemont and farther west than that, it's 60 acres minimum. This, this gentleman is Von Meyer, he's located in Harding in Perkins County, he's lived on the ranch for over 50 years, and 80% of his land has always been designated as grassland. And with his new soil reassessments, he's afraid he's going to be taxed out, that his taxes will exceed his income. This is a testimony from the Johnson Ranch. He's owned it for over 40 years, the last tax, his overall increase in evaluation was approximately $210,000. And Custer County, he's afraid won't, won't adjust the mill levy, they, they're resistant to adjusting the mill levy. The Sterns Ranch is a fourth-generation ranch in Fall River, and these are pictures of the actual cropland, or grassland that's been re-designated as cropland on his ranch. And he anticipates if this goes into effect, there'll be a 300% increase in his taxes. And they say have pictures worth 1,000 words, I think these pictures are pretty stunning. And this is the Falkenburg Thompson Ranch, third-generation operation, 27 miles southwest of Edgemont, and these are also photos of his grassland that's been re-designated by artificial intelligence, intelligence as cropland. According to Susie Hayes, Fall River's taxes, you see there on the graft, there's a gradual increase every year. The increase, the new soil reassessments proposing, is greater to that of the last decade of increases. They'll increase it 173.3, I think, $3 million. And then they readjusted their tax tables, and in the new version, it only increases $70.8 million. So, in summary, what I'd like to see and hope for is that the commission could support our ranchers and support Draft Bill 50, and if we work together towards a common goal, the ag industry can thrive. We need to help them to continue to manage the grass, to grow the protein. I think all of us know the history, that when the settlers came and the feds, federal government... I think all of us know the history that when the settlers came and the Fed's federal government donated land to them, they all came to crop it. And West River, that East River, that worked out really well. West River, they plowed, no rain came, the topsoil blew away, and we still have scarred ground, East, uh, West River, because you can't crop it, there's not enough rain. So the ranchers have told me they're dedicated not to break the soil. They want to maintain the integrity of the grass and the natural grasslands. Agriculture is our largest state industry. And if we join together and we work together, I would can help save our ranches, save our grassland for the future generations. Thank you.
Representative Ladner, I just want to point out that although you live in Fall River County, you represent Fall River County, Custer County, and a large portion of rural Pennington County also.
Yes, I do.
So appreciate you coming to us with this. This would impact also non-cropland in Eastern South Dakota in addition. I mean, it's not just.
Across South Dakota.
Right.
The biggest impact, I think, would be experienced West River just because of our soil types. And you can get in the history of the glacial flow and the, you know, but it also though, I was at the Ag Land Task Force to present this and Speaker Gosh spoke and he said, you know, I'm an East River rancher and this affects me too. So it is, it is a statewide problem. And James Halverson, the Executive Director of Stock Growers Association is here, and I would like to have him be able to talk to you.
Oh, sure.
Would that be, do you have any other questions for me?
Any other questions for Representative Ladner at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one.
Commissioner Luster.
What was your takeaway from that Ag Task Force, from that meeting? What was your conclusion at the end of that meeting?
Cautiously optimistic.
Okay.
There were people on that, on the Ag Land Task Force, there are ranchers, growers, and civilians. I felt resistance from some of the, a couple of the civilians, Department of Revenue, of course, our non-board. But the ranchers themselves acknowledged that this, this is not the first time this has come up. In 2010, Kristi Noem and Jim Peterson, Representative and Senator, introduced Bill 1202, House Bill 1202. And they passed in the House, but when I went to the Senate Committee, they were encouraged to pull it in order to let the system kick in and fix the problems. It was reintroduced by the Ag Task Force Committee in 2016, SB4. Basically the same bill, same wording. Huge bipartisan support in the House and Senate. And they were called into Department of Revenue and asked to table it because these new soil reassessments and tax tables are going to fix everything in two years. And fast forward six years down the road, I'm dusting off SB4, same language, little bit different. Noem's bill said if it's been grassland for 10 years, it remains grassland. The Task Force said if it's been grassland for 30 years, it remains grassland. So I started out with 20. It remains 20 years, if it's been grassland for 20 years, it shall remain grassland. And that's negotiable. But pulling it isn't negotiable for me. This, this is something that's been kicked down the road this can far too long. And our ranchers have suffered and it's, and one of their favorite things from the Task Force was saying, well, this will cause a shift. Shift, well, the shift occurred back in 2008 when the productivity model was put into place. This is shifting back. And so it's going to be interesting. I felt, I felt that we garnered some support and that's why I went, just to expose it, get support and input and feedback from them. And we will take it to the floor this, this year. But I would love to be able to say you support it and you stand behind, you know, the ranchers and stock growers, South Coast stock growers are behind us 100%. And I really appreciate that, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
How do you handle the soil types classifications within the Black Hills where there'd be land that's zoned agriculture, used for agriculture, but if they took it out of that ag status, you're in that 20,000 acre range. And that, I think this is where it gets a little complicated, I'm assuming, when you get into the Black Hills soil and you look at the value of real estate in the Black Hills.
It does, it does, but they make it complicated, I think, for a reason. And so this, this, I think, the simplicity, that I've been told by legislators, the beauty of this bill is in its simplicity. It's clean, it's concise, it addresses one problem, and it's an elephant. And my husband's here saying, it's hard to eat an elephant, it's one bite at a time. This is our first bite. And if we go too broad, we're going to lose, we'll just lose. Because there's too many, there's too many factors. So if we can take this first bite that corrects 85% of the problem, then we hit the second bite and the third until the elephant's done. But I think it's important to kind of pinpoint focus on this and then build out from that with other legislation.
Well, I certainly appreciate the time that you put into this project.
I appreciate.
It's pretty aggressive.
I appreciate you having us here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Just identify yourself.
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you. James Halverson, Executive Director of South Coast Stock Growers. And this is an issue that has been near and dear to us for a long time, ever since this, this current assessment system has gotten into play, like you said, in about 2008, 2009. I won't belabor the point too much because the good representative did a great job representing and explaining the issue. I would say, you know, to your question, you know, that gets into the ag versus non-ag status. And really, this bill is solely focused on the ag designation. So that's, it's kind of in a different realm there. I would say a little bit of this system is, is kind of like, it's taxing us based on the land's potential. I mean, that would be similar to taking a gravel lot down here downtown and taxing it like it's the Alex Johnson. I mean, it's just not what we're doing with that land right now. We think that that's just completely unfair. The productivity system was adopted, and the whole system is predicated on our county directors of equalization going out and making the adjustments. And these adjustments, there are different ways or different reasons they can make adjustments to a parcel. And that's outlined in state statute, which are size, location, terrain, topographical condition, climate, accessibility, and surface obstructions. And that sounds great, but our county assessors are extremely capable, but yet very busy as well. And that can range across a wide spectrum across the state. And so if those, in some counties, these adjustments are being made and they're doing a really good job. And in some counties, they're not being made at all. And some, a lot of counties are somewhere in between. And so if those adjustments aren't being made, this current assessment system just is not fair to those people that may have, you know, a large ranch and they have 40 acres on top of a plateau that they can't get to. Well, that's still being taxed as though it's East River corn ground, even though it's never been tilled up. Also, if we want to talk about another point would be conservation, the current system really incentivizes guys to break up land that, as Representative Ladner said, really has no business being broken up. If we want to continue the tradition of ranching and being the best stewards of the land, I mean, that, that decision, that management decision should really rest with the guy whose legacy and whose economic status is on the line. And we think they're going to be the ones best equipped to make that decision as long as they're not influenced by the current tax structure. And that tax structure is really forcing them into trying to push that land almost to the point where it's mining. And we certainly don't want to see that. I guess, you know, we don't want to run around and say that the sky is falling because, you know, that never wins over hearts and minds. But this is a serious issue that we've been dealing with for, you know, 10 years or so. And over that 10 years, this productivity system was incrementally implemented. And we've seen guys, not that their taxes will go up by 200 or 300%, over the last 10 years or so, we've had guys whose taxes have gone up by 100, 150, 200% since 2009. And now we have these new soil tables that could come out and it could increase that exponentially even more. If you saw that graph that she showed, it was kind of a linear graph, then all of a sudden, it might turn into an exponential increase. And that's really scary for us. So we would just ask for your support with this and I'd be happy to take in questions.
Mr. Chair. Any questions? Commissioner Ross Connect.
My question would be how much latitude does a county have compared to the state that pretty much gives us the statutes that we have to follow? When it gets down to the county level, I know it's not black and white that sometimes our county assessor has to use, he has, they have to be subjective and to do that, sometimes you just got to go out there and look at the piece of property involved and really see what you got. Is it, like you said, gravel pit compared to Alex Johnson? And sometimes, you can't necessarily always do that on a software or a soil map. I know, I have friends in Custer County and they have, they had to get the commissioners out there and take them out there and said, look, if this is rocky, I can't do nothing with it. And they did change a category, the way it was categorized and adjusted the census value accordingly. But like you said, it's very time consuming to do that.
Mr. Chair, if I can respond, you know, you bring up a couple of really good points. One is that the tax structure is that zero sum game, right? So you have an amount we have to come up with. And so if these taxes are going down, somebody else's are going up. Or as ours have gone up, somebody else's have probably gone down and they're getting a pretty good deal right now. So that, that makes it kind of a fight. It always does. But, and at the same time, to add to your point, it takes a lot of time and a lot of boots on the ground to go out there and make all those adjustments to the things that I listed there. Whereas this bill is very simple. If it's been grass for X number of years, it should be taxed as done in crock ground because that's what it is. And we think that would really simplify things all across the board, especially at the county level.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So I believe this is a serious issue and I think you always have believed in the ag community. But I also don't believe because your taxes go up, others go down. Some of the information that's presented here, just from listening to Shannon, which I don't see he's at this meeting, I think that other side should be presented before I support it, just to make sure all the facts and the information that we want to move forward with. And I believe he will give us a evidence-based kind of presentation. Not that this isn't evidence-based because we've had information and, and again, I do support the tax or the ag community and it is a serious issue. But at this point, I'm not willing to support this without the other side giving their information and telling us the facts on how this is done and even help us and help the people that are here today maybe even come up with some better ideas. So again, if I say no today, it's not because I don't believe you guys have worked hard on this for the stock growers and the legislator, but I just think we have a top-notch assessor, or the assessors in our community, and we also have Shannon that I like because he will say straight up, you can do it this way, but maybe there's a better way to do it. So again, not against what you guys are doing today, just think we can do it and see that other side and come up even with a better solution.
Commissioner Adcock, I will be calling on our county assessor in a minute here to come up and give us his opinion too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further questions of Mr. Halverson?
Mr. Chairman, is there an opportunity to have Representative Ladner come back up here?
Absolutely.
I think she has something else to add.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry. One thing you need to look at, and our assessors are fabulous. They are hardworking, overworked people going out making adjustments. But in, according to the USDA, there are 43 million acres of agricultural land in South Dakota. There are 25 million square feet per acre. So what we're potentially asking our assessors to do, if we want boots on the ground, is to go out and personally inspect 1 billion, 75 million square feet of land. So I can't, I can't say how much I admire our assessors and the job put before them. Another component you have to look at is that when they do go out and adjust a piece of land, the formula's broken. It doesn't calculate right. You say if grassland is, this is just for an example, taxed at $10 an acre, the worst grassland, level eight, and the best is assessed at, cropland is assessed at 100. The assessor goes out and says, you know, well, you know, this is a rocky mountain with so much of an incline, has an overhang of rock, you can't even get to it. I'm going to reassess this from a three back down to an eight. They plug in the formula and it'll maybe go to $80. It doesn't go back down to the 10. And that's one of the reasons DOR had to pull it back because the formula is broken and the formula does not take into account rainfall. So there's a little more information for you.
Okay. Representative, did I understand that correctly? There's 43 million acres of ag land in the state? Any idea how much of that would qualify for non-cropland?
No.
Okay. Do we think that number even exists anyplace?
I'm sure it does. I can, I can try to hunt it down. We're pretty good researchers.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I could tell the excitement was building with you. Get up and speak on this.
I thought I was successful in hiding from Commissioner Hadcock. Shannon Richter, Director of Equalization. I'd like to address the last question you asked first. This, the subject of this bill, this problem, has been before the legislature almost every year that we've been doing the productivity assessment since 2008 or 2009. The representative mentioned several bills right there. There's other similar bills as well. And through that process, at some point, there was a study here in just the last few years, which answered that question you asked. If we did this, it would have this much of an impact. And if we did nothing, we have this, and somewhere in between, if we did this, it would have this kind of an impact. I want to say two years ago, maybe, maybe three. So I know there is that and maybe I can find that for you.
Thank you.
In, in, in general, my general opinion of the bill is, is I pretty much don't care. I understand the problem, but it's a problem the legislature needs to fix. And whatever the legislature passes, that's what my office follows. I just want to say that this has been before the legislature multiple times and it hasn't passed yet for, for lots of reasons, I suppose. I wasn't at the Ag Task Force meeting that Commissioner Luster was at. I, I'm curious what the Task Force thought because that is the forum where this should be heard. That's the purpose of that Task Force. The only other thing I want to address is the comments about the proposed rise in taxes. And we've actually talked about that here. The state is working with SDSU on a new soil survey and new soil information, which is the basis of ag taxes in South Dakota. And they had a preliminary soil survey that they sent out to a few counties in South Dakota as test sites to see how it worked. And they found mistakes. So we didn't get to implement that new soil survey as quickly as we thought we would, but for good reason, because we found mistakes in it. Nobody assumes that we are going with that soil survey and those kinds of increases. The whole reason that it was backed off and is being looked at in more depth is, is because we don't want to do that. So I don't want you to think that there's doom and gloom coming, and that's nobody's intention. And we're still waiting to see what happens there. But again, going back to the subject of the bill, I understand the problem because I've heard this all, all of the years that we've been doing productivity. But I think the Ag Task Force and the legislature, but especially the Ag Task Force that working with the legislature, is where this should be heard because it has been heard many times there.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Adcock.
So Shannon, how many properties does this affect in Pennington County? Meaning, so if we, if we say we support this and it goes through, you said you didn't care. But how many people does this actually affect in Pennington County? But how many people does this actually affect in Pennington County? Because we have different crop, we have different soils, we have cattle more than we have farmland. I mean, I'm into helping the ag people in one sense, but also making that, you already know, based to assessments and different things that we have, based on evidence based, I guess is a good way to put it. So if we're changing how many properties to cropland, how does that affect us in Pennington County? How much does that affect us in Pennington County and how many people are we talking about?
So I can't answer that specifically because obviously I I don't have any numbers for you. But just common sense. Most of the ag land in Pennington County is probably used and has been used for many years for grazing. So it will have a big impact on the ag land assessment in Pennington County. The ag assessment in Pennington County is something, I think, just short of 2% of the entire assessment. So that's how much of an impact it'll have on everybody in Pennington County. But I'd really like to find the study that was done a few years ago, which, which, which detailed that impact much better than I can just guessing here now. I, it it was a pretty good study with some pretty good numbers and I'll find that.
Already ag, what they're asking for basically is that some properties aren't ag because some of that wouldn't be used, it can't be classified under cropland. So the ag would stay ag. But they're saying if they, if I'm correct, they want to add more ag because they could call it cropland. And we have had problems in the past where, which I agree with the ag people and the, and the legislator, that some of this that they use for cattle that they graze on, we do not let them use it as ag. So I see both sides of the story. But like I said, with the ag community or the land, it's already ag. This proposal just adds more of that ag into cropland so they can say it's grazing land. Am I correct?
I want to agree with that last statement you said because I I was lost in all of the rest of that. I think what you said at the last is correct. This does not change what's classed as ag or what's not classed as ag. It only impacts the properties that are currently classed as ag. And it's an issue of whether they're assessed as cropland soils or rangeland soils. But only those properties already classed as ag.
So if they're rangeland or otherwise, there's a different amount of how much they pay. I thought if you're ag, you're ag and you got a $10,000 exempt for building and some other things.
Okay, so ag land assessment is similar to the non-ag assessment. A, on a non-ag property, a $300,000 house pays more taxes than a $200,000 house, just because the value is higher. When we go to an ag assessment, your assessment is based on the soil quality of a property. So a property with better quality soils will pay a higher tax than a property with lower quality soils. The Soil Conservation Service has classified those soils from really bad to really good. And somewhere in between there, the Soil Conservation Service says the really good soils are typically farmed and cropland. And the really bad soils are typically rangeland. Now you can farm really bad soils and you can graze really good soils. But are the soil survey that we use identifies the highest and best use of that soil as either cropland or rangeland. And the assessment is either higher or lower and therefore the tax is higher or lower based on that soil quality. And this bill will impact that, that designation of cropland or rangeland and ultimately impact the taxes.
So it's not going to change, it's not going to bring non-ag into ag by changing soil content or because it's used for grazed land. It's not going to change any of that. It's just going to change the already ag assessment based on soils because it shouldn't be based on soils if they're using it for grazing.
Yep, you're correct.
On, it would bring some of the non-ag into ag because they could use.
No, nope, 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 it would not do that.
I think we need to continue.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
Shannon, when it comes time for folks to appeal their assessment, how many plant or how many cases do you get where someone will come in and say, look, it, my soil isn't what, you know? We were talking about the workload of a county assessor. So I'm just asking you, just on an average each year, how many folks come to you and and try to change their assessment because they don't agree with the soil types or the, or the ratings that the soil types portray?
Absolute guess, I'm going to say we probably deal with 20 maybe a year. And I want to say 20 properties. There might be multiple tax parcels in each property. But maybe around 20 a year.
An idea what the, the current system, the problem that it's causing your office.
So part of it is, is that, you know, especially for westerns out Dakota, you have 640 acres. Soil show that you got 40 acres of cropland, but it doesn't make any sense of using it for cropland. You use it for your rangeland because it's within what you're using for grazing cattle or livestock. So I mean, that has a lot to do with it too. Is I mean, yeah, it looks like you should be able to go in there and farm that. But why would you invest in the equipment or hire somebody to do it for a small acreage, which is going to cost you more in the long run than what you're going to gain from it? So.
Mr. Chairman. And Shannon, out of those 20 properties that you guesstimate, I know you, this is just a guess. How many acres are involved in that?
It's a more difficult guess. I, I gotta say, I don't know with that.
Okay.
It's what, one person might come in with a 40 acre parcel. Another one might come in with a 300 acre parcel. And I, you know, I, I was guessing at the number of appeals we deal with.
We just, we just hear 20 is a small number, but it could encompass several thousand acres potentially.
One property owner could.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was thinking.
Commissioner Adcock.
So since I've been here, we haven't had that many appeals on ag during our ag appeal. And if we have, which I have to commend Joe, I'm correct, Shannon, who was our ag guy. He would go out, even if they protested in the appeal with us, he would go out and they would show him those areas and either come back lowering it or saying he's right, which most of the time he worked with a solution which came back 50 50. So I'll just tell you, we didn't have a lot of appeals on ag since I have been here. I don't know if Lloyd remembers, but I think we've settled them either before they came or we've actually had the assessor go back out because maybe just, just to be nice and to to look, Joe has came back with solutions. So again, I haven't seen that many appeals on ag land since I have been here for what, almost eight years?
I think one of the issues with that, Commissioner Hadcock, is is that the bill that's being proposed is not in effect. So you don't have the option, those people do not have the option of coming in and appealing it based on, on what this bill would actually do.
Because there are, it's already written in black and white what the requirements are and how the Department of Equalization has to follow the rules in evaluating those lands. So if, if the Department of Revenue or Department of Equalization is given black and white and they go out to that land and it's black and white, even though the, the rancher thinks, well, even though the rancher knows I'm only using her for cropland, the assessor still says, I'm following state statute. I'm following the definition. This changes that definition a little bit, allowing leeway for that rancher to go in and say, I want to designate it as cropland. Do you see the difference?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment before you end this.
Please, go ahead.
Off site subject, on any appeal and even before an appeal. Anybody that appeals or simply asks us to go out and look at a property, we go out and look at every property, ag or non-ag. So if a property owner has a concern about their assessment, that's the first thing we want to do. And we do do is go out and look at it as long as they let us.
Commissioner Lassiter, you brought this before us. I don't think, I'm going to look for a motion to do anything today. I think more information and probably needs to be gathered to be presented to the commission as to how such a bill could impact Pennington County. So that we have more information before we move forward on this.
Yep, and I'm willing to do some of that footwork and ask some questions and reach out to Shannon to get some information as well. Work with Representative Ladner for some more information, stock growers as well. And so, and then of course, present some more information and maybe even a draft resolution of support before legislature if that is something y'all are interested in. That's kind of what I was going to finalize this, this little bit with, if that was acceptable to the board.
Representative Ladner, Mr. Helverson, appreciate you coming before us today. Thank you for the information. Certainly something for us to give consideration to. Thank you, Commissioner Lassiter, for taking this on. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
Could we ask Shannon to put together a, just a one page document with the pros and cons of this so that we would have something to look at going into the future as a benchmark?
He doesn't know how to do one page documents, so.
Okay, two page document from back. It's just something that I'd like to have that I could put in my file.
Okay.
Work into a 10 page document.
I, I didn't hear that, Commissioner Hadcock.
Let it be.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Next item is committee reports, item 26. Travis, we'll start with you.
Oh, all right. Okay, let me get all my notes here. So we'll start with the Rapid City Library Board of Trustees. I was in and out of that meeting because I had a meeting prior to that one that kind of overlapped. But the big takeaway from that one is they had their book turn in, basically no fault, return your books and we'll, we'll read, you know, we'll remove your fees and all that kind of stuff. They had a good turn in of that. And so that was my big takeaway there. And let's see here, let's go to the EM Users Board. That Golden West Tower is out down Creighton, out in Creighton off of Mooney Hill, the update out there. Golden West is actually donating a tower for us to utilize for that radio project out there. So that's actually going to save a significant amount of funds out there. So that was.
Located?
Uh, off of Mooney Hill, out, out Creighton Road, north of Wall. So that was, that was probably the biggest information at that particular meeting. They're within their budget and things of that nature. But that was a, knowing that Golden West is going to donate that tower. They don't have to put in a tower. They don't have to put in a, you know, the base and or anything of that nature. So that's going to help with our radio communication out in that area.
So is this a tower that Golden West no longer is utilizing?
Utilizing. They've just left it there. They, they took their stuff off. But, you know, it's sometimes more expensive to tear down the, the stuff. But now knowing that we need it out there, we're going to donate it over to, to the county for that. So that was a pretty big, pretty big deal. Looking at the Emergency Management Users Board, I'm trying to just think here. They're working on getting drivers to the Yambus on November 2nd. Alexis is doing a teen, no, not a teen, an adult cert class. The teen class was actually canceled. And then they're doing a presentation at the Rep City Area Schools for Safe Training, which is like a cert class, but it's, it's kind of trimmed down for those that are in school. And that's going to be happening here soon. And then outside of that, I was at the Central States Fair Capital Improvement Meeting and we really just went over the, the presentation that John's going to give to the Vision Fund Committee for, for some of the updates out there. So outside of that, that's about all I had for my last couple of weeks.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Sweet. Yay. Well, no, I did go to the board, one board, but he gave the report.
Okay.
The extension advisory boards got moved to next month, so we're good.
Okay, so Central States Fair Board met on Monday, last Monday evening. And there was, the report was indicated a very solid year for the Central States Fair. They continue to be very busy every week. They're accommodating a lot of the community need also, such as the recent training for sheriff and Rapid City Police Department using grounds out there. They have their application in for a million dollars for the vision fund dollars, all of which, if awarded, would be used for infrastructure needs. They currently are working on sponsors for the 2022 Stock Show. And I did not make it to the MPO meeting, so I'm going to leave that up to Ron.
Well, I certainly wish I could have made it too, but I didn't. I was on the road and I was a few minutes late. But I do want to touch base on the agenda. And one of the items on the agenda was the Greater Northwest Passenger Rail Working Group Letter of Support, which a lot of communities in our area are being asked to support this request. I'm going to be attending a part of the Hills Economic Development Meeting on Thursday. And they're going to be getting that request too. And I'll be able to speak on that on Thursday because we're part, I've been part of that dialogue. I've attended one meeting. But this organization is focused on bringing passenger rail service to the northwest portion of the country, an area which is lacking in rail connections. Additional options for transportation models or modes will enhance tourism, manufacturing, and other aspects of our growing economy. So I was on a Zoom meeting with a representative from Tim Johnson. And if you look at a map of Amtrak, you know, if you look at South Dakota and Wyoming, there's just a big void. You know, we got a lot of good passenger service up around Billings. And so the, the goal is to, you know, you got to take baby steps, you got to take that first step on a thousand mile trip. What they're trying to do is bring that type of service to the Black Hills region. They're even talking about a, the black and yellow train that would go from Yellowstone to the Black Hills. So just, I think that's going to, and me and Deb are on that authority as an alternative. And then Lloyd is a, on that. So it's all new to me, but that was one of the items that was discussed at the MPO meeting. October the 7th, I attended the Olympic Rapid City Luncheon. I was one of the panelists. There was five of us. There's Lori Frederick with Governor's Office of Economic Development, Corey Mencken, who's the Spearfish Economic Development Director, Talbot, how do you?
Wazorik.
Right, Mead County Commissioner. Yeah, we jabbed back and forth a little bit during that lunch, both being county commissioners. And Patrick Dame, Rapid City Regional Airport. And the questions they were asking is how do you define economic development? Specifically, when we talk about the Black Hills areas, a hidden gem or where everyone wants to be. What about our region? What about our region is so attractive for economic development? And we all had different responses to that. But another one that was focused towards me and Talbot was, as our profile here in the Black Hills continue to grow, we need to kick the master planning from a regional perspective into overdrive. Why is our regional master planning so critical for now and the next 20 years? How does this play into our move conservative West River mindset? And there again, we had different answers. But to me, you know, when we sit there and look at the growth spreading west into Wyoming and, and the Black Hills, we really start, we, we need to address our water quality, you know, and, and density. To me, it's all about density. Just if we have the capability to address water and sewage, then we could probably go higher density. If we don't, then we have to maintain larger parcels. And then our communication is the secret sauce for success within any organization, company, sports team, you name it. That's sort of different when it comes to economic development. Ron and Talbot, could you both touch on how important strong communication is at a county level? And by what I mean by that is how a company or person can affect the change at this level. I reached out to Holly, help me Holly, because I don't know what the heck they're asking. And she helped me and, and that question was never asked. and she helped me, and, and that question was never asked. And to wrap up, they were asking each of us to provide a call to action for the crowd, and my call to action to the crowd was simply, we have so many folks moving to our area from out of state, just, just help, bless you, help preserve our identity. Who in the heck are we? Because I, I see this in Hill City, we're getting a lot of out-of-staters coming in, and they get in the city council, they get in planning zoning, and it just, it, it doesn't mesh well with the people that have lived their, all their lives. And we, you know, we have strong work ethics, and I, I really think that we need to protect our identity going into the future. And then the Building Committee, we still work on, and I don't, I didn't get my notes on that, but we did set a, a basis for accumulated funds going from year to year, and that was $1 million, and then 15% of that would be allocated for reserves. So we would never go, no matter what project come up, we'd never go below that 15% of that million-dollar benchmark. So pretty much, that's it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Haidcock?
I apologize, last week I had surgery, so I did not make the meeting that I had last week.
Okay. Anything further under committee reports? Hate to ask that, because Commissioner LaCroy usually jumps in.
I could give a report. Have you seen, you guys heard about that chemical disposal this weekend?
No.
At the fairgrounds?
No.
Dustin had talked about it quite a bit, they don't do it, it's hazardous waste. They consider stuff, encourage you to get it out of your house and drop it off, and it's paint, it's aerosols, and so forth. Well, my wife got me into that, but it was two and a half, three hours in line to get through it.
So that was this past weekend?
That was Saturday, last Saturday. I think if you looked at, when you were down there, the people work, I mean, they were working their tails off, people taking breaks, they were throwing the stuff in the dumpsters. You know, it was just amazing that the community was that busy. It started at nine and was supposed to end at one. I think we got out of there at one, and there was still a little bit of a line going through there, but.
That's, that's good practice to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Done with item 26. Item 27 is approval of vouchers, an amount of $5,199,576,27.
Move or approve?
Second. Got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 28.
Move to go to executive session?
I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second for executive session for personnel issues, department head reviews. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
We moved June and November.
Are we ready, June?
Yes.
Okay. Take a motion and come back under regular session?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. John?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So I've got a number of personnel motions to make. The first two I'll do will actually be the state's attorney. First motion would be this, I move to place Alexander Weiss, Senior Deputy State's Attorney at Grade C 44, Step 6 on the Gallagher Pay Scale, for an effective pay rate of $3,116 per pay period, effective October 17th, 2021.
I move.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next one is this, I move to place Tim Snyder, Senior Deputy State's Attorney at Grade C 44, Step 6 on the Gallagher Pay Scale, for an effective pay rate of $3,116 bi-weekly, effective October 17th, 2021.
So move.
Their motion, second. Your second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the next five then are from the Highway Department. I move to place Aaron Eagle, Heavy Equipment Mechanic, at Grade B 24, Step 16, for an hourly rate of $29.30 an hour, effective, and they told me that, and I didn't. God damn it, I had that written down, but I don't think I put it on this one. It wouldn't be, no, we can, if the commission would be okay with it, we could do it for October 17th as well. I don't have the date in my notes.
For 31st?
31st would be, that's what they were after.
That's the next one.
That would be the next one. So that would be the date.
Be, what date?
Here, let me, it's on their other form that they turned in to the auditor. Yep, the 31st, so it's 10/31.
10/31, okay.
Yes.
Is there a motion? Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next motion is to place James McGuire, Heavy Equipment Mechanic, at Grade B 24, Step 7, for an hourly rate of $26.36, effective October 31st.
Move or approve?
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next requested motion would be to place Cody Olson, Heavy Equipment Mechanic, at Grade B 24, Step 5, for an hourly rate of $25.17, effective October 31st, 2021.
Move or approve?
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. Call, or, or all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next request would be to place Ronald Stegner, Heavy Equipment Mechanic, at Grade B 24, Step 16, for an hourly pay rate of $29.30 per hour, effective October 31st, 2021.
I move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And the final request would be to place Jay Wetzel, Heavy Equipment Mechanic, at Grade B 24, Step 5, for an hourly rate of $25.17 per hour, effective October 31st, 2021.
I move.
Thank you.
Motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. Move to adjourn?
Second.
Let's see, trying to think if we got everything? Think so? All those in favor adjourning, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
We waited till you took that bite.